6:00 PM, it's time to get our meeting underway. For the record, today is November 1st, 2016, and this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Swanee County. I'd like to ask all members of the audience on the board to silence your cellphones at this time, also turn off the wave. This time you don't have to worry about the vibration because we have special microphones there. But before we get started here this evening, I'd like to ask Randy Harris to lead us in the implications. Should we try?
Thank you, Mr. Harris, please. Father, we praise you and we thank you for your love and your mercy, your kindness, your patience. We thank you for the opportunity to come together and deal with issues that are forced to our community, and in that we ask for wisdom, guidance, and counsel from above. Father, we ask that you bless those who are weak and sick and have special needs. We ask that you bless our military personnel and their families, watch over them, keep them safe. Father, all these things we pray in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for doing that this evening. Once again, we'd like to welcome one and all. Change of venue here, as you guys well know. Voting is underway in the great state of Florida. We encourage every one of you to exercise your right to vote. Over at our judicial annex, early voting has already begun. If you'd like to address the board during the comments and concerns section of the agenda, I don't know if there are comments cards out, stuck out front? No? At that time, we'll just come up to the podium and we'll recognize you to speak during that portion of the agenda this evening. Before we jump into the rest of the consent agenda, we'll do approval of the minutes for the October 18th, 2016 minutes. Board members first, are there any changes or corrections you'd like to make?
I had none. I'll offer a motion of approval.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'd like for you to turn to page 22 on the minutes, and the change that I have is reflected in the last paragraph of the, actually, just the last sentence of the, it's in the dark letter right there. I would remove the words "to compensate," and that would be my suggestion change.
Okay. There any others? Are there any questions by the board about that change to the county? Seeing none, the chair recognizes Mr. Dick Calvert.
Dick Calvert, Rickford Road level partner. On a personal level, I appreciate your service to the community. You all have family, jobs, spent many hours here, so I'm thanking for that service. Concerning the minutes, are you ready to approve? The agenda item called for possible action on the TDC budget. During the meeting, the majority of the budget concerned the administrative services. A lot of dialogue, all that, 50,000 down to 20,300. Conversation then developed among Commissioner Bashaw and two members who are not members of the TDC or the county commissioner. Dialogue going back and forth. That dialogue was really not captured for individual commissioners, but yet it was voted on. I went to the clerk's office the next morning to get a copy of that budget, and it wasn't available, so, you know, I got them. That was my first point. The second point did, was referred to the administrative assistant position. The minutes reflected that you approved a contract with economic director or the services or Alvin Jackson. That was not on the agenda. The agenda referred to the TDC budget. So, I would request myself that your minutes, if you're about to approve, be amended to the modification of the TDC budget, send back to the TDC for their review. The items are appropriate, but it just wasn't your privilege, in my opinion, to make those changes. The dialogue, you know, with Mr. Jackson, evidently you knew what the vote was going to be, to even have that dialogue with him out in the, out in the audience. So, you know, make those modifications, send them back to us for review. Also, we appreciate the recommendation of Mr. Jackson. He would be a great asset, but I just don't think it was an agenda item that should have been approved at that time, and we would request that you send that suggestion back to us. We're the one that's running the council, and we should be the one that selects who administers, not you guys, but, so, that's my request, and I appreciate it.
Request was made to alter the minutes based on a suggestion from the Chair of the Tourism Development Council, Dick Calvert. Does anyone choose to make that correction in the minutes to the board's discretion for that to happen?
Mr. Chairman, the minutes reflect the meeting that we previously did. More what I heard requested was not to change the minutes, to change the action that the board took.
Okay.
The action has been taken. All this is a representation of what we did at the last four meetings. I read through it, it's an accurate representation of what we did. Mr. Calvert's concerns would have to be addressed. By changing and altering these, it doesn't change what we did at four meetings. This is just a representation of what happened at that four meetings.
Mr. Calvert, is that consistent with what you believe to be true?
Certainly, that's what happened, but the minutes, I think, were out of order, and I've just come back for the next meeting to address that. You know, we had a meeting today, Mr. Jackson appeared and was prepared to do his job. It was my opinion that really, till those minutes were approved tonight, that he was not in fact the administrator for the TDC. So, we adjourned that meeting. I'd like to meet again with you guys, like Commissioner Gamble says, that I have concerns, because we accept the recommendation, but we just feel like it's our prerogative to choose who we want to run our meeting, and the modifications are going to be of record. And again, I think it would have been amendable to send them to us for our review.
So, when you stood up to address the board in the minutes section, it wasn't to amend the minutes, you weren't asking for a change to the minutes?
We were asking for approval of the budget we submitted.
No, 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 I'm talking about right now, in the present.
Yes, sir.
You want no change to occur to the minutes as they are written?
The change I would recommend is the 50 to the 20,300.
In the minutes?
Yes.
And I received, you know, I think procedurally, the question was whether or not the minutes accurately reflect what occurred at the last meeting.
That's what we're debating.
Yeah, they do, they do. They absolutely reflect what occurred.
What we're going to do now is we're going to move forward with the approval of these minutes, and then if you wish to address the board, you know, at another time during this meeting, during the comments and concerns section, you certainly can do that, and we can, we can have this discussion further.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion of amend.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to amend the original motion by adding the recommendation by council to, on that page 22, last paragraph sentence, to, to strike, to compensate.
Understood.
I don't have a problem with that.
All right. Commissioner Fleming, do you amend your second? Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right, there's a motion and a second, as the records reflects. Is there any further discussion? All the favors say aye. All opposed, same sign. We do have a time-specific item, and that time has not yet arrived. Moving to the consent area of our agenda here this evening. Gentlemen, are there any items that, or that you would like to pull for individual consideration this evening? Hearing none, I need a motion of approval for items 2 through 17.
Second.
Well, I think, I'm going to, I'll make a call. Motion made by Commissioner Gamble, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Everybody okay there?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? All the favors say aye.
All right.
Appreciate your eagerness.
Didn't mean to stop you there.
No problem.
I'll hold back.
It's about 6:10 PM, we have a time-specific guide for 6:15 to be heard by the board. I guess we'll move on down to the State's Attorney's Office. Mr. Harris, is there anything that you need to discuss with us regarding the State's Attorney's Office this evening? All right, so I guess we can do the public's concerns and comments, we can start that. Is there anybody who would like to address the board here this evening? I know Mr. Calvert, you'd like to address the board. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Go ahead, Mr. Hancock.
First of all, I vote aye. Big thing, the reason I'm up here is Raid on the Swanee is next weekend, November 12th and 13th. This will be the third year that we've had it at Heritage Park. We're hopefully going to have a big crowd. I think I've talked to everybody, or gave you a handout, or passed them out, I don't know who I gave them to, but I'm hoping that y'all and your families can come. It's a good event. It's a, basically a living history event. If you get there early enough on Saturday and Sunday, hopefully you'll come both days. But you can actually go down and tour the camp, talk to the reenactors, and see how life was in 1860, thereabout. I'd say, for those of you that don't know, it is a what could have happened battle. The Union forces came out of Jacksonville. Their objective was the railroad trestle that was at it, was now the Swanee River State Park. That was their objective. Fortunately, General Finnegan and the Confederates met them over there and stopped them. But this, very well, we could have had that battle here in Swanee, was now Swanee County. So, I just want to invite you all out in public. Gates open at 10 o'clock both days, and the battle hopefully is going to start right around 2 o'clock. One year it was a little earlier, it went later, so you had, you didn't get a double treat, I know, if they do that again, but thank you.
Mr. Hancock, before you go, do they, do you have historians out there to answer questions or someone?
Eric Musgrove will be there on Saturday. He's also giving a presentation at the library on Monday evening at 6 o'clock, right here.
I believe so, yes.
Time's getting confusing anymore. But yeah, Eric will be at the library Monday evening for the presentation, and he will be out there.
Seven.
Seven. Will be out there also on Saturday, answering questions and things. We'll also have Dale Baker out. He will be bringing some artifacts and some other things that he has. It's going to be interesting. I encourage you to come. Are you kids?
Thank you, Hancock. Go ahead, Mr. Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just an announcement like, like the last one. Following, just preceding the Raid on the Swanee on the 12th and 13th, we're going to have our immunity Veterans Day Parade. It's going to take place at 9 o'clock on the left, starting at the library, and going to, at the elementary school, I'm sorry. And going to proceed and come down to 129 to 90, make a left, and come down, going to end at Langton Stadium. So, please come out for the Veterans Day Parade. Organizations, if you haven't signed up to participate in the parade, there are forms available, so sign up to participate in, to participate in the parade. If you're not participating in it, just come out and observe it, observe the parade and kind of support the interest in the parade.
Okay.
See you there.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, 6:15, and item number 18 on our agenda is at 6:15 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, approval of preliminary and final plat of Sand Pine Estates. And at this time, I'd like to vote in a public hearing, and we'll give our, and anybody planning to offer testimony in this matter, please stand and be sworn by the county attorney.
If you anticipate that you will give any testimony for or against, it doesn't matter, or make comments with regard to just a particular plat, would you, would you stand? Seeing none, I just see staff, Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, wait a minute.
You get to be sworn, too. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, board members, we have a minor subdivision that is for the board tonight for final plat approval. Minor subdivisions differ from major subdivisions in that you only have one approval process for them. Minor subdivisions only contain three lots, and this one does contain three lots running existing county roads. Location of the subdivisions in Section 33, township 4 South, range 15 East, at the intersection of County Road 137 and Central Road, both of which are county paved roads. The development consists of three five-acre tracts totaling 15.01 acres on the overall development, and the lots do front existing paved roads. And being consistent with other subdivisions the county's approved in the past, we have had some, some discussions with the developer, and on the actual plat, we've limited the driveway access for lot number two to the, the north 200 feet of lot number two along 137, and the west 400 feet along Central Road. This is so we don't have a driveway access so close to the intersection of the two roads. So, there's plenty of room to, you know, when they make their driveway application, building permit application, that they'll be able to fit that within those, those areas that are provided. There's existing utility easements along County Road 137 for the power to come in, and the plat indicates the utility easements will come along Central Road and then between the two lots, number two and three, to service those off with power. There are no flood zones or wetlands in the development, and the plat was prepared by Brett Surveying, and then we, we as the county had Tim Alcorn from J. Sherman, Briar and Associates review the plat for compliance with Chapter 177 Florida statutes, and the original plats have been signed off by the surveyor. And the title, opinion, and disclosure statement is attached with the application for the subdivision. The surveyor did it a little different than we sometimes get. We normally get one original plat that the chairman signs off on, and then we get two mile or copies after that. He doesn't choose to do it that way. We have three original plats, so if the board does approve the subdivision, it's up to the chairman to sign off three original plats.
Any questions of the commission to staff at this time about this subdivision? All right, at this point in time, I'd like to open public comment. Seeing none come forward, I'll close public comment at this time. Does the board have any further discussion? Hearing none, what are the wishes of the board? Motion to approve made by Commissioner Gamble, seconded by Commissioner Wainwright. Any further discussion? All the favors say aye. All opposed, same sign. At this time, I'd like to close public here. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir.
All right, going back to item number 21, public concern and comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up to address the board at this time? Mr. Calvert, come forward.
Thank you, sir. The minutes reflect that the chairman stated that the TDC was the subsidiary board of the county, and the Board of County Commissioners was authorized, approved, and make changes to the TDC budget if they so desired. If they so desire, means you won't have the prerogative to do that if you so desire. I think it's appropriated that you have input from the board. You appointed us, and we spent hours going over these numbers. Most of you've served on the board, you know the amount of time we spend. So, you know, again, it was dialogue with Mr. Jackson and the audience, which leads me to believe that you knew the vote was going to be to go to 20,300, and you were going to appoint him. So, the dialogue with the attorney and Mr. Jackson did not result in a document in front of you that should be approved, but yet you approved that budget. Again, I had to get those numbers from Mr. Musgrove at a later date. That was my concern. The other concern is with the agenda item being possible approval for the TDC budget. No reference to making a decision as to who would administer the grant. Yes, the dollars amount changed from 50 to 20,300, and we understand that, or I understand that, but no reference, no public input, that I don't believe that you all really have the privilege of making that decision. You should be making a referral or recommendation, recommendation to the TDC.
Understood. What, Mr. Calvert, what do you feel the role of the Board of County Commissioners is in relation to the TDC board? How do you see, how do you see that, that relationship between the Board of County Commissioners and the TDC?
To hold us accountable and do the things the right way, and see that we are promoting tourism in the county. And in conversation with Mr. Prabat, to the friends, you know, I understand we need a marketing effort, we need a plan, and in January we did come with even for that plan, and we need to get your suggestions and approval of that plan. And so, you know, I welcome that, but for you all to sit there and make decisions on how we are going to run it based on your decision, I mean, this board is fluid, it changes. You know, we've got to deal with whoever you give us, which is, Mr. Jackson's going to be fine, but that, I just don't feel like that's your privilege. You know, it wasn't a budgeted item, I mean, it wasn't an item, there might be public input, you know, but for you to make an assumption, really, that you knew how the vote was going to be, you made the call, I don't know who you, and he agreed, I don't even know who you shared that with, but it was approved. I just don't think that's transparent, and that's not a problem.
Do you feel that the Board of County Commissioners serves as an advisory board to the TD Board, or the other way around?
No, I made that statement today, and it was correct and right, you oversee our board.
Okay, absolutely. I just wanted to define, define the relationship. That's right. Are there any questions, comments by other members of the board who want to address these allegations that you have?
I don't like, I don't like that word allegations.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I, I mean, I'm just saying.
It's a suggestion.
Okay, well, all right. Well, wait, wait, Mr. Sessions has the floor.
Mr. Calvert, it sounds like you're saying that we were discussing things out of sunshine, and we already had a plan before we came into the meeting, and that's accusatory, and I take the exception of that, so I just want, I'm going record to say that, that's all I got.
Mr. Gamble? I'm going to agree with you wholeheartedly. I'm paying for our facts, they wouldn't have known to decide before that meeting.
Why was the commission, why was the chairman talking to Mr. Jackson?
I, I can't, it's not against the law for him to talk to him prior to the board meeting.
No, this was during the board meeting.
I understand, that's not against the law for him to talk to him during the board meeting.
We ask for staff input at every meeting.
You asked for staff input, for Jimmy to bring you a suggestion for improvement, meaning you knew what the vote was going to be, and then you asked Mr. Jackson for the same information. I'm not saying, it just appears to me that there was not some continuity in the decision that can process. Again, you made a decision on the budget that was not even in front of you.
Well, what I will tell you is that whenever this board comes together, we can make decisions by majority that we feel is in the best interest of the county. That sometimes agenda items can lead to other items that we discuss and take action on, and that is why the voters put us in here, is to do the business of the county. Those, sometimes we decide to postpone things. I know that there have been many discussions regarding this body in the past, and I think that we were just trying to find some finality to it. I will say that I did have a discussion with Mr. Jackson regarding his interest in doing that, and I presented that to the Board of County Commissioners.
When was that?
And they decided that they would like that as well, but in no way, shape, or form, prior to the meeting, did I know that the board that I, that I was going to give any support with that suggestion.
Comment?
Mr. Wainwright.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Calvert, at the last board meeting, I take offense when, when people suggest that we're doing something behind their backs. As you said, it kind of appeared that way, and I hate that. I don't, I don't like that. That certainly didn't happen. I made the motion to approve, but I'll share with you my thoughts prior to making that motion. Number one, as we came into that meeting knowing that we had a TDC budget that was, in my estimation, or my conclusion, that it was incomplete. There was that $50,000 that was in question as to what we were going to do since the TDC and the chamber had separated, or whatever had transpired between those two groups. The effort began during the meeting to decide, as we do with our county budget, how those monies are going to be appropriated. And also in that dialogue, the discussion came up as to, or the statement by Commissioner Bashaw for Mr. Jackson to take over, administrate with the help of the assistance that we're going to be placing in that particular office. So, having all that discussion prompted me to go ahead and make the motion to approve the discussion of the budget and how those monies were to be appropriated, and also the inclusion of Mr. Jackson in his office, being the ones to oversee how those monies are being delegated, how that particular fund is being distributed through the TDC, and then also to, to make that effort to bring the suggestions of the TDC to the commission for them to make final approval of what your recommendations are. So, that's, that's the whole gist of it right there. There was no prior discussion. I had no idea that Mr. Jackson had any inclination to do that, wasn't privy to their conversation of what they were doing. All I know is that upon going to that meeting, my goal was to make sure that we concluded the TDC budget, and that's what we did through that motion.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any further discussion?
Do you all feel that the appointment, forgive me, person, the appointment of the TDC administrator was pertinent to the approval of the budget?
I feel that during, during the conversation, there was no one now administering to the staffing needs of the TD Board as vacated by the previous entity, that there needed to be some decisive leadership at that point in time. Now, the allocation of funding for that was made, as we do for many other departments. We create positions, we delegate funding, we, we do a lot of that during the budget workshop process. Unfortunately, during this time, we had some bumps in the road regarding the budget, some, some discussions, and I think we just wanted to put it to rest, and, and so we made the recommendation to, or not really what recommendation, it was like, we said, this board said we were giving you direction that we wanted the budget changed to this, and then we wanted Dr. Jackson to oversee the day-to-day activities of that particular board. And typically, that, that's how it goes. I, I feel like that at this point, I was open and ready to have a discussion about this this evening, prior, as we did at the other meeting, but coming forward and accusing us of operating outside of the sunshine is not the way to. us of operating outside of the sunshine is not the way to address the board of county commissioners. So I don't feel, I don't feel warm and fuzzy now.
Well, that was a concern I had, so, you know, you're providing the leadership, the board that you agreed to fulfill the obligation, TDC doesn't have the leadership ability to look for our own administrator?
We, I mean, at this point in time, as a subsidiary board of the board of county commissioners, we can make the decision as the elected body to do that. The TD board serves as a pleasure of the board of county commissioners.
You really believe that?
I don't, I don't know, is, am I correct in saying that? Does anybody feel anything different? Does anybody, does any commissioner feel that the TD board does not serve as a pleasure of the board of county commissioners?
I would agree. They are as a advisory board to the county commissioners.
And we appoint them, correct? We appoint the board members to that board.
Comment.
Commissioner Wainwright.
I, I don't disagree, or excuse me, I'll agree with you, I, I think the TDC members are capable, yes. I don't have a problem with that, but by the same token, all along, there's no doubt in my mind that not only the chamber and the TDC interact and work together, but also our economic development director and his department. So those three entities all, you know, have been working together for some time and so I had no problem at all in our discussions two weeks ago. I think, I thought it was a great idea. I hadn't thought about it, but when the suggestion was made, I, I thought it was great that our economic development director could head that up and help spearhead and direct, and as a direct liaison between the commission and the TDC and the chamber. So I, I didn't, I didn't think it was a bad move at all.
Mr. Chairman.
What I was gonna get to, the statute clearly states that y'all are advisory board of the board of county commissioners and you look up advisory, it says that you, advisory is having or consisting of the power to make recommendations but to not take actions to enforce them. You make recommendations. The board does not have to agree with your recommendations. They do not have to ask you for another recommendation, they can then give you direction. And I believe that is what the board has done. And I'll tell you my mindset behind it is I believe that before when the county created an economic development department, the chamber was the right spot for TDC. Once we created our economic development department, I said during the budget workshops, I think it's time that we start to pull all our resources together and get behind the department that we've created as a county and that we're putting county tax dollars into to run and operate and try to bring economic growth to Swanee County. That is my driving force behind that. Now, if we get down to it and if everybody's absolutely honest, what it boils down to is not who we see fit. You said Alvin Jackson will be fine, you said the chamber will be fine, it comes down to who gets the money. And if I'm running an economic development department as a board and I'm looking at how are we gonna use the money that's best suited, I think it's best suited to go into our economic development department to pay for the administrative services for our economic development department and not the TDC. And that's where I'm coming from for it. So it's not that I don't value y'all's recommendation. I have a different idea and a different direction that I wanna move into.
I probably would appreciate those recommendations from the back to us for now on.
Well, I'll just, I'll disagree with you there. I think there has been some gap in communication between the two boards and I hope going forward that we can remedy that problem over the next couple of years.
So everybody's clear, I wasn't accusing anybody, they just gave me the appearance that Mr. Jackson was lined up, ready to go.
Jackson, Jackson brother, he's always lined up, ready to go.
So he is the administrator of the TDC board?
Yes, sir.
He's, he's the mailman, the janitor, all of that stuff, all wrapped up in one.
Anybody else who'd like to address the board at this time? Ms. Catherine Allen, County Extension Director for the University of Florida, extension.
Wanted to let you know, I'm a member of the Housing Education and Research Association. It's an international group of professionals that meet for research and education on housing issues and last week I hosted the conference in Jacksonville and just wanted to let you know that the people were really, they were really pleased with the efforts that we put forward. We toured Mayport Naval Base to check it, look at housing from a little different perspective. We also visited HavaJax, which is the largest habitat for humanity home builder in the, in the United States and just all the sessions went really well and I couldn't have done it without the support of my office as well as my assistant, Karen McGallier. So just wanted to let you know that we're representing Swanee County and the state of Florida really well. We had visitors from Korea at that conference, so just, just to let you know. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 22, administrators' comments and information. Mr. Harris, do you have anything?
Additional.
Additional agenda items. I have one additional agenda item. Authorization to bid on surplus vehicles at Sarasota County Surplus Sale for Road Department, Health Department and Building and Maintenance. And this is a budgeted item. Are there any other items that anybody would like to add? Seeing none, we'll be very attentive to Randy.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'd like to amend this just slightly. There are other departments that are not listed here. I know that we never did find the truck for the extension office and also Parks and Recreation. They've been purchasing surplus vehicles down there as well, so I'd like to just amend this to all of the departments that currently have funds that were budgeted for that purpose, authorize them to go ahead and shop down there. And let me just give you a quick update. I think the last conversation we had about surplus sale in Sarasota County, we talked about the grade all and some other pickup trucks. The board authorized us to go down there. I brought this back today because there's been a gap in time. What happened after your action, we were prepared to go down and begin placing our bids. The county commission in Sarasota County, for some reason, decided to just stop the process and hold off until now. So they're simply resurrecting that same auction now that would be the bid phase. So we still have grade all and other things that we were looking at then, but these are some additions that are now included in your budget if you approve or approve.
Does everyone understand? Let me administer your questions. What are the wishes of the board? Motion to approve made by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Moving on to county, oh, sorry, commissioner items, any commissioner items? Seeing none, county attorney items? None. Mr. Chairman. 22, administrators' comments and information.
This is different than having a microphone. Really gives me an appreciation for our facilities.
Yeah, sure does.
I'm also thankful that the city was able to accommodate our needs this evening. I, I wanna say that we have yet to schedule it, but we will be scheduling the celebration parade. The contract has finally arrived for our CDBG funding for the railroad. The last of the three pots of funding that we've been seeking to construct the railroad. Now there's a very long process involved in red tape associated with the CDBG contract that we have to undergo. A lot of red tape with CSX. We've got multiple agreements that'll have to come back to the board between us and CSX. Ultimately, we hope to get the construction of that rail underway. The parties, we've kept them apprised of what's going on and updated. They're very excited as well. I spoke to one up in Texas today, so we're thankful for them. And if you wanna ride in the parade, we'll be glad.
Good job. Great, thank you. Go ahead.
In the parade, the Veterans Parade, we will, and I'll sign up for it, but we will have the trolley in the parade and for any veteran needing to ride or wanting to ride in the parade, we'll be happy to get on the trolley to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Sessions. So we'd like to thank staff for working very hard on getting that, that brand. All right, board members' inquiries, requests and comments. Commissioner Fleming, you have anything?
I don't really have any comments, I just would like to say that our chairman had a question, I had to play a servant of you and the chairman and Commissioner Wainwright on this board and, you know, kind of bittersweet when you, when you work as a team and you, you never had any hard words. I'm a person like this, I like treat people fair and everybody to laugh. Sometimes it don't work like that, but I can certainly say that, you know, since the time I've been on this board, we never had a disagreement, maybe some things that I didn't agree with, or maybe some things that, that never came out. So I can say I'm glad to have the opportunity to serve the board of you and.
Well, I appreciate those words and I'm, I'm happy to say that you get to serve with us one, one more, one more meeting.
I said it again.
One more meeting, you get to, you get to put up with us, so we'll, we'll take the very kind words and look forward to hearing them again, so one more meeting. Mr. Sessions?
I said what I'd say about the governor's name. No?
Go ahead.
All I have now is supposed to mention the parade, but often the board sold us from it. If you do need to pick up a form, they are Elstray's office, which is our veteran's office, service veteran, the board's CEO out there, Mr. Ward himself, Elstray, several others worked over the past year, but if you have a Veterans Parade committee in the next three times, we look for senior go out there.
Mr. Wainwright?
Well, all of a sudden, I was thinking about some closing remarks there.
Not yet, sir, not yet.
Trying to check my calendar real quick. I'm missing something here, but, so with that, I, I will have some closing remarks the next go-round. I'm good tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was, well, I was surprised as well.
Is it that historically, it's always been the first Tuesday, but November is the last meeting?
Yeah, it has been and that's when, when we took over, but we got some feedback from the Board Association of Counties and says that it's the second Tuesday after the general election.
After the election.
Right, so that puts us a week past.
After the candidacy board approves.
After the candidacy board approves the election, so, so you have to deal with this one more meeting. But at any rate, I don't have anything either. I just need one thing.
Bush to adjourn.
Bush to adjourn, made by Commissioner Sessions, seconded by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor say aye.